City Council come to order, clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cadim? Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Entertainer motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second has been made by Councillor Dion, second by Councillor Repozo.
I think you have to read the, uh...
Correct.
The language.
Correct. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item number one is a pole relocation and relocations. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc., for newly joint-owned pole locations and relocations as follows: Bedford and Seaberry Street. Six new jointly-owned pole locations and two jointly-owned pole relocations. Install six jointly-owned poles and relocate two jointly-owned poles on Bedford Street and Seaberry Street, beginning at a point approximately 50 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Bedford Street and 12th Street, and continuing approximately 950 feet in the west direction. Extending overhead conductor along Bedford Street for system reliability. Poles on adjacent streets relocated to support additional conductors in accordance with the Plan Number 29748813 dated September 19, 2022. Are there any proponents to this proposal? Come on down, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Patrick Gugubian. I am a contracting engineer for National Grid. I did the design for this. Basically, it's just extending the pole line down Bedford Street. We're relocating one pole near 12th Street just to, or sorry, 11th Street, just to even out the span distances, make it easier for the pole loadings to work out. And then kind of same thing for Seaberry Street. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You might as well stay there, you get the next one, right?
Yeah, I do.
Motion to close, Aaron?
Second.
Hold on, councillor.
No, wait.
Councillor, are there any opponents to this public hearing? There being no opponents, I'll just say a motion.
Second.
Motion to close has been made by Councillor Kilby, second by Councillor Repozo. Item number two, underground conduit. Massachusetts Electric Company, for an underground conduit located as follows: Bedford Street, install 65 feet of conduit from the south side of Bedford Street to Pole 19 on the north side of Bedford Street, near the intersection of Bedford Street and Ford Street. And install 63 feet of conduit from Manhole 24 east along Bedford Street to Pole 23/50. Manhole 24 is located at the intersection of 12th Street and Bedford Street, in accordance with the Plan Number 30333673 dated September 19, 2022.
Mr. President, a motion open?
Second.
Motion to open has been made by Councillor Repozo, second by Councillor Pereira. Are there any proponents to this?
This also has a condition attached?
There is a condition. The roadway restoration curb-to-curb requirement. So there will be a curb-to-curb roadway requirement on this.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any proponents?
Yeah.
Go right ahead, it's all due again.
Yep, so this is kind of just tying into that, the other pole replacements and pole installs. They just tie into existing switchgear and transformers that are within the underground system along Bedford Street. Yeah, this really just improves system reliability along Bedford Street.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing no opponents, I'll just say a motion to close.
Second.
Public hearing has been made by Councillor Repozo, second by Councillor Pereira. Public hearing?
Motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn has been made by Councillor Repozo, is that second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now adjourned. We have a couple of individuals have signed up for citizen input time. First, we have Karen Diers, subject matter, MBTA, and charter committee.
Thank you, councillor president, members of the city council. Before I begin, usually when I watch these proceedings, usually there's a separate vote. The open finance meeting, I don't know if it's different now, but anyways, I wanted to come down today because I'm really confused as to why we have on today's agenda a vote to support a ballot question, and a vote to give the MBTA easement access, when the voters have not even taken a vote on this project yet. I think it's putting the cart before the horse. I think the vote to support the yes side, the no side, or any side of any ballot question is illegal. I think it's unethical. And regardless, regardless, the city council should not have a role in any ballot question whatsoever. The council shouldn't take sides on any ballot question. That is to be decided by the people in just a few weeks. I would even make the equation that this equates to election interference, persuading individuals to speak in a public, on how they should vote in a public building. And I think this will lead down to a slippery slope. And I don't know what would, what would be next. Are we going to support candidates for reelection? Are we going to support candidates in the next year's election? I'm just confused. And quickly, on this election for the charter committee, I think it's a huge disrespect to this council that the names that the mayor sent down on the charter committee were resubmitted when this city council just voted no a few weeks prior. I would agree with some of the sentiments of the council, especially the councillor in seat two, that I would like to see a diverse board, and individuals who have knowledge, experience, and craft in a charter committee, and have no political connections. I think that's what the city should see. I think that's what would be best for our constituents. And I thank everyone for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to state that in the past, we used to have citizen input time before finance, but the clerk has brought to my attention that we need to open the finance committee. Entertainer, open, entertain a motion to open the finance committee?
Motion to open finance.
Motion has been made by Councillor Pereira, second by Councillor Kilby. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, and may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. The second individual we have to speak is Nelson Vasquez, subject matter, MBTA.
Nelson Vasquez, 210, Sunset Hill. So I suppose everyone received my emails confirming everything that I said at my last council meeting. You know, the proponents for the rail are telling the constituents here and far over the airwaves, on social media, "Don't worry about it. You vote for this, you won't have to worry about anything. You won't have to worry about being displaced. It's all going to be great." But you see, this article here just came out not too long ago, and it says rents skyrocket near MBTA stops. I mean, we have provided the human toll that this project is going to bear down on the people. And with skyrocketing rents, which they will increase, we all know what it's going to come with. Eviction notice. It's so bad that an article from New Bedford has already gave forward a preview of what's happening, because now residents in New Bedford just received a notice that they're going to be displaced, because an out-of-town investor came in, bought the building, and had been given a notice to leave. You know, and not too long ago, there was an article about seniors just struggling to maintain their household, and they're getting priced out. You know, with all this market rate housing all everywhere, including this, for the other side to not even acknowledge the human toll that this is going to bear, is totally disingenuous to the public here. We don't provide speculation about this project. We're providing the reality of the situation. We don't know how that project is going to go. I can tell you this, people are not going to be able to afford to live in forever for much longer. That's not speculation, that's a fact. So, you know, and look, and the fact that this is resolution before you, before the vote even takes place, the election needs to be respected. This is the second time that plans go into motion without the people weighing in their decision, because the projects got started before them voting on it, and now this resolution with the easement. The people needs to be respected, the election needs to be respected. So, again, we don't need to give you speculation. This is going to price out our people. And to me, that's not stability, that's catastrophic. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councillors, can we just get a roll call? We took the, the motion was made in second to open, but I never asked for a roll call. Madam clerk, can you call the roll, please, to open the finance committee?
Councillor Cadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repozo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. There being no one left to speak before, I'm going to have Paul Frelin come down. He's, we had a water main break this morning, and he's going to address, just so the public will be aware of what we're doing about the water break, and just be real brief, Mr. Frelin, please, before we begin finance.
Good evening, councillors. Thought I had a night off, but back here. But anyways, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about an incident that occurred this morning and is currently still ongoing. We had a water main break in the 600 block of Brayton Ave early this morning, about 5 o'clock in the morning. We were able to isolate that section of water main. Once we started to excavate down to the water main, there was, there was clear signs of contamination below grade. So, something that we, you know, that concerned us, the water department, is the safety of our drinking water, the public that drinks the water. So the water main was under pressure the whole entire time, until we fully isolated that section of water main. Once we isolated that section of water main, it was not under pressure anymore, and the concern would, could be that some of the contamination that was found in the ground could go into that section of water main. That section of water main, again, is isolated from the whole entire rest of the system. What we're doing as a precautionary measure, measure, is we have a contractor out on site, and we're putting out temporary bypass piping to supply the 20 residents that are without water right now, because we want to leave that section of main offline until we're able to properly sample, to make sure that there was no contamination that entered that water main in that area. So as I said, there's about 20 residents, so the 600 block of Brayton Avenue, as well as some residents on Reeve Street and Aberdeen Street. The problem with short notice of putting bypass out and connecting them, so bypass is the temporary water lines that run above the surface of the ground, and then there's a hole that feeds from that bypass into the house. The problem with that is by regulations, to properly set up bypass, you need to set up bypass and then chlorinate it to disinfect the bypass, get a clean bacterial sample, and then you're able to connect residents to that, to that bypass. We don't have the time, bacterial samples take roughly about 24 hours to, to get back. So the contract, we have a contractor out there on site, working on setting up bypass. We expect that all customers will be able to be turned over to the bypass by about 10 o'clock tonight. But for those 20 residents, we are going to have a boil water in effect until we are able to get a clean coliform sample on the temporary bypass that's out there. Again, it's a safety precaution to make sure that, that it's safe. Bypass will be hooked up tonight. Tomorrow, we will, we will sample first thing in the morning, get our sample off to the lab, get the results back Wednesday morning. We are making personal contact between our staff. We've had wastewater staff out there. We have an LSP that DEP required us to bring in, which is a licensed site professional due to the contamination. So I just wanted to let the council know. So it's about 20 residents. Prior to us turning them back on, we are making personal contact with each household to let them know of the condition of what's going on. We, I have been in contact with DEP, both the hazardous response team all day, as well as the drinking water program in DEP. They're fully aware of the steps and precautions that we're taking, and are on board with what we're doing. So, again, I just wanted to give the council this update. It's changing by the minute sometimes today, but we're out there. And like I said, hopefully the residents do have that, that their water aren't able to shower and use for other household showers. What a boil water, water means is that we don't recommend not using it to drink, wash dishes, or cook with. If they want to use it, brush teeth. If they want to use it for anything, we recommend that they boil the water to a rolling boil for a one-minute period, and then let it cool, and they're able to use it for any of those activities. So if there's any questions, I think most of you have their cell phone, so feel free to contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. We have a number, a couple of transfers. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to your honorable body: that the sum of $1,370,000 be in the same as appropriated to the school appropriation from the tax levy.
Refer to full council.
What's the motion?
Motion, refer to full council.
Second. We don't need a referral, it's already in there, so we'll just, questions, motion to mean second to referral. All in favor?
Aye.
Entertainer, anyways. We're going to, we're going to talk on the motion. Can you come down, we have some, councillor have some questions.
I have a seat open now.
Sure.
It's a net school spending.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councillor, Councillor C2, do you have a question?
Yes. Can you define, explain, or clarify what taking a school appropriation from a tax levy means?
So we're not taking it from the tax levy, so as we're getting the new growth numbers, we're increasing the levy with, by the additional new growth that the assessors office has identified. And we need to transfer the 1.3 to the schools, because when they, there was about one point, just about that same amount, that they thought that the schools were going to use from some other funding.
To offset the cost of the city for net school spending?
Yes, and so that didn't actually come to fruition. Our budget had already come down, and was already being approved at that time. So we've been in conversations with the school department all along.
So again, I guess my question is, because it reads, "The school appropriation from the tax levy FY21."
Again, so, so we are going to have an additional new growth. So we had about 1.8 million in new growth in the budget that was appropriated in June, and there's going to be an additional, just over that, in new growth.
Okay, so, then the money technically isn't there yet, because we're going to have additional funding to fund this item?
Correct.
So we're voting to pay it with money that's not there yet?
Well, it'll, it will be there, because it's part, it'll be part of our, our...
Right, but it's not there yet.
Well, it'll be there this year.
Okay, um, so, on the July 12th agenda, mayor in order transferring the sum of 1.00, let me see, $1,300,000 from FY21 surplus revenue to stabilization fund. Is it, was, at that time, was there any idea that that would take care of this?
That won't take care of that, because the city received a letter back the February before, saying they were about $3 million short in net school spending.
We're $3 million short, but we're...
So that 1.3 was making up the, to take care of the $3 million from the years before.
Okay, and that went, that went in the stabilization fund, and we transferred it out of there?
What went into the stabilization fund?
The $1,300,000.
We transferred money out of the surplus revenue to give the schools funds to make up for what we were short, that we received a letter from DESI.
Okay, I'm just looking at the agenda. Mayor in order transferring the sum of $1.3 million from FY21 surplus revenue to the stabilization fund. So I just didn't see the trail of going, the 1.3 going into the stabilization, then coming out, and, and...
Because that 1.3 was for, was in FY22. This, this 1.370 that you're doing is for FY23 budget for net school spending.
Okay, so the 1.3 that you just said we already used to, towards the $300 million, was which one?
No, so there was, we, there was two transfers that happened at the end, towards the end of last year, after February, because the city received a letter from the Department of Secondary, okay. And so we, those transfers, that's what I thought you were talking about, I apologize, was to make up for that $3 million short. At the end of the year, we transferred the 1.3 to the stabilization from, that we had a balance of free cash. I could not transfer FY22 money to pay an FY23 budget.
Correct.
That's why you're seeing the two different, they just happen to be close in amounts.
Okay. All right, so I'm still having a difficult time approving something that we don't have. Like, I would think we'd wait until we had the money in our budget before we'd expend the money.
Well, it, it will...
And there were no, and can I ask, in the future, for backup documentation, so we can read it in advance, and, and then I wouldn't have to ask some of these questions?
So, I mean, I apologize, I, so the new growth is something that happens typically, and as it gets, normally we would know those new growth numbers more definitively, but the city took an opportunity, I guess, of an 18-month, so normally, your new growth prior to, a year ago, used to happen in December, was certified. Now it goes to the end of June, so we didn't have exact numbers. So I, the assessors office was still working on that, so when we did the budget, we did not know what the new growth would be. So now we know what the new growth is. So it will be part of the tax levy for FY23, so you will have that money. It'll be part of what's going, going out in the tax bills.
Okay, with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor C1, Councillor Cadim?
Thank you. So the, so you've already received your certification on the new growth from DLS?
They're working on that right now.
Okay, so, I, I just wanted to clarify that. So typically, I mean, just to councillor in seat two's point, so that the money is just an assumption of revenues coming in, and then obviously, with the new change, usually by, you know, October, end of October, you get a certification from DOR that will tell you your new growth. So typically, what has happened in the past, we, obviously, are conservative with the, the estimates, and then sometimes they come in higher, so you've got a surplus in revenue, which will then just, obviously, if we're not doing an appropriation, what the tax recap would float on free cash, that's where that stands. My question is, in terms of the 1.3, this, you had mentioned there's a $3 million deficit, did we cover that $3 million deficit?
We covered that $3 million deficit.
Last, last fiscal year?
Last year.
Okay.
But it was rolled over from two prior years.
Right. So the 1.37, is that giving us 100% net school spending, or do we anticipate additional money is needing to go over to the, to schools to fulfill the 100% in net school spending?
So that fulfills their budget. We're going through the end-of-year reports now, and...
Based on that?
We're hoping that it's going to be 100%.
I had just one question that's kind of tied into the schools, not necessarily the transfers, so if you, quickly, and if you don't have the answer, if you can just kind of, I think, just send me an email or something along the lines, but Amroll Bus, I know this has been an ongoing discussion, that there was, I guess, a settlement that was made for Amroll Bus for services that were provided, and I think this all relates back to the COVID transportation, so I know the city is on the hook for any type of settlements. I'm just hearing that the settlement should have taken place within six months, or the payment should have taken place within six months of the settlement?
So the, yeah. So we had planned on paying that settlement for the end of last fiscal year. The agreement did not get signed until the end of July, and so unfortunately, because the way free cash goes, you know, expires on June, we now have to then, it's kind of semantics, take it from stabilization, transfer it into FY23, and it's being paid out now.
So the, the agreement, does the agreement, is it date-specific, or was it specific on the execution of the contracts?
So the, the agreement itself was the subject of a mediation. So, once the mediation was completed, it actually took a little bit of time to hash out the language of the agreement. So it was July before we, we nailed the thing down. It, I don't want to get too much into the sub, this, the, the actual...
I guess all I'm looking for is anticipated payment date, but that's all, and if there's...
I believe it was paid, I already paid on the warrant.
Oh, it was, okay. So you don't, you don't require anything from, from us in terms of additional transfers or anything of that nature?
I just need this transfer, because we transferred it last year.
Yeah. I know, I know what you're looking for. But I just wanted to make sure, in terms of that, that aspect.
Yeah, that just happened.
Yeah.
That just happened.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You, councillor? Thank you. Councillor C3, Councillor Kilby?
Yes, Councillor Cadim clarified my, my, my question, so. It's a fiscal year 22, fiscal year 23. New growth stays very consistent, by the way, so it's a safe, a safe step. So I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor in seat six, Councillor Pereira?
Just a quick question. Is it number three on the agenda, on the full council agenda?
It is.
The sum of 180, that's the bus that we're talking about now?
Yes.
But that's further down in the agenda?
Yes.
That's what Councillor Cadim was talking about?
On the full council.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor.
Oh, okay. Thanks for the clarification, I didn't realize that was the one. All right.
Thank you. There being no further questions, we don't need a referral, because it's already in the meeting. So we'll go to the next one, item number three. In accordance with, with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriations to your honorable body: that the sum of $1,080,000 be, be in the same as hereby transferred to the law expenses from the fiscal year 22 Stabilization Fund.
No.
$180,000.
We're in number three in finance. We're on appropriation of the $2,000.
Two transfers, we're doing a second transfer, councillor. Item number three, and second transfer.
Okay, that's the score.
$180,000.
Yep.
Transferred from the law expenses to fiscal year 22 Stabilization Fund.
Yeah.
It's now item number three.
Yeah, that's the one.
And so that is the settlement. As you might recall, there, there were two litigations ongoing with Amroll Bus, who certainly struggled during COVID, and you had expenses that didn't necessarily go away, filed suit. We had an ongoing dialogue that culminated in mediation, where we were able to reach a, I believe, an equitable settlement for all the... Were we able to reach a, I believe, an equitable settlement for both the city and to, uh, address the, the actual out-of-pocket expenses of Amroll? And I think it, it worked for all the parties and that's the 180,000.
Any discussion? All right. Thank you very much. There's no referral neither in that one either. Item number three now. Discussion, order appropriating 2,205 dollars from C P A, undesigned funds for CPA historic resources preservation projects and CPA community housing. Any questions?
None.
Is there a motion of further full body?
Some motion.
Motion of further full body made by Councilor Pror, seconded by Councilor Pelletif. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four. It's a resolution discussing funding for construction of storage facility area. How's the resolution that was filed and tabled in, uh, 6/28/22?
Motion to move from the table?
Motion lifted from the table, has been read by Councilor Keddie, seconded by Councilor Pror. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to give us an update on that, please?
So just as a starting point, um, I would say maybe six to eight months ago, this council raised some concerns over one, lack of storage, perhaps just as important, the fact that the city was paying for storage. And once we were able to put a plan together, Mr. Denmead and some other department heads in the city that were using storage on Seaberry Street, got together, cleared that storage out, uh, did an amazing job of very quickly, uh, figuring out what could be stored elsewhere, uh, what could be, um, disposed of, what could be scrapped, where, uh, you know, what was even in the Seaberry Street storage facility. Uh, that saved the city approximately $60,000 a year, uh, by no longer having that, uh, ongoing rental. That was a $5,000 a month rental. Um, so that was remarkable work, uh, on their part. Um, there are a few things that are now being temporarily stored, um, in the Armory. Uh, that is not a, a permanent or long-term solution. However, uh, the majority of things either do have a permanent home, uh, or were, um, found, you know, were either disposed of, found homes or scrapped, things like that. Uh, and there's also been quite a bit of progress being made at, uh, the Lewiston Street facility, with an eye towards, um, permanent storage, the next sort of phase of this, uh, to be erected. Uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Denmead, but I just want to say one more thing. We are, uh, we've interviewed all of the candidates who applied for the Director of City Operations position. Uh, the reason we haven't moved on to start looking at putting, uh, putting up storage facility, revamping Lewiston Street, all that sort of, is, is one, I, I wanted the reorg to go through in order for there to be a point person of both facilities and D C M, who could take a look at, um, doing, uh, a, a intentional professional study of Lewiston Street to see how we can better improve and use that facility. Um, and so that's going to be one of the things that that person is charged with this, uh, from day one. Uh, and I think that is going to significantly change how we, uh, manage storage in the city. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Denmead to talk a little bit about specifically what they did in order to address the storage concern that was brought up by this council, uh, that many months ago.
Uh, good evening, councilors. Um, Mr. Council President. Back in, uh, I'd say the end of July, uh, we, uh, I think it was June, we had last sat and discussed the storage issues. And, uh, we dove in and, uh, we initially, uh, started to clear out the, uh, D C M facility on Lewiston Street. We, uh, proceeded to, uh, uh, supercharge the auction. And, uh, to this point today, we have, uh, uh, sold at auction 17 pieces of the equipment that were there. We still have some left, large pieces, um, but we moved salters, uh, uh, fire apparatus, some of the, uh, uh, solid waste collection vehicles that were there. Couple of trolleys, vehicles that would sit in there for quite some time. We scrapped some metal and we just cleaned up the facility. We, uh, went to, over to, um, myself and, uh, uh, the Director of, um, uh, Facilities Maintenance. We went down to, uh, the Seaberry Street property. And we did a, a total evaluation of what we had there. We put some of, some of what could onto the auction. Uh, we, uh, relocated what we could back to the D C M complex. And, uh, some of the items that were being stored there belonged to other entities. Uh, we had some items that belonged to, uh, that were donated and given to, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations, donated from, uh, uh, the school department. And, uh, we, we located them to their facilities, um, uh, in different items. And we relocated it. And at this point today, outside of the, uh, Christmas decorations that we moved to the Armory, everything else pretty much was located right back to 10 Lewiston Street. And, um, we still today have, uh, room at Lewiston Street. But enough room to accommodate what we generate and what we need to store there. One of the biggest issues we had to this point was taking in outside, uh, materials and storing that over the course of time and, um, not keeping an eye on it. But, um, with since, um, we've been donated three Conex boxes from the school department that are arriving at the D C M complex this week. And that, with them, we, we'll help facilitate some of the items that the, uh, facilities maintenance will have. And some of the items that we have, that we now have stored inside, we can rotate into these Conex boxes and let, uh, the, uh, Maintenance Division bring more trucks in to repair, to rotate around. And just, it, it's just going to ease up the burden that we have storing some of our equipment.
And these are steel, waterproof, secure Conex, uh, shipping container type boxes.
Councilor C6, Councilor Pror.
I know that you're trying, Mr. Denmead, to do a lot of this stuff. You talk about auctions. Where were these auctions? Because none of us heard about these auctions. And if it was the online auctions, I don't know. Nobody in the city knew about them. So if somebody wanted to buy something that was, you know, up for auction, like some of the old-fashioned lights, the blue lights that had Fall River on them. I know Bishop Connolly had asked for them, uh, to be donated and they would repair them. So what did we get for those? Maybe they would have bought them now. How did we go around getting this, these auctions and when was this auction had?
Well, all, all the auctions, there was a time we used to have the auction once a year down at the yard. And it was in September, we'd store all the equipment, would go out and tag it. And on a Sat- Saturday morning, everybody would come from all around and buy everything that was stored. But now, everything, and it's been for, uh, quite some time now, everything goes through the purchase department, it's recorded, and everything goes online. Everything, and it's, it's sent out across the country.
And none of the residents here get to know what, where it's on? Um, purchasing isn't here. Tammy was here earlier, but I guess she left.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just curious about that. The other thing is, um, I have been to the Armory. I talked to, uh, Attorney Akins about this earlier today. I've been in the Armory. It's a mess. When you first walk in, I don't know if some of that stuff is even dangerous for people to be in. The tiles on the floor, I can't tell you, but they're all ripped up. But there is a lot of stuff there. Why would we put, store equipment in the Armory if we're going to sell the Armory only to move it again? Did we pay people to move it there? Did our workers move it there? There's a lot of poles and lights and a lot, if it was just our workers doing it, it took them a long time to do it.
If I may, the majority of, of what's in the Armory has been at the Armory? Like, that was not recently moved there. There were a few things from Seaberry Street that were moved to the Armory. That's a temporary situation. Uh, Mr. Denmead recently met, uh, with the team in facilities to make a plan to actually begin clearing out the Armory, uh, of what's been stored there for a significant period of time, not just in the last couple of months. Um, so that's, that's really the next phase, uh, of this, but we're going to get that stuff out of there.
Ms. Akins, I like what you're saying, but I got to tell you, I've been to the Armory a few times. Uh, there wasn't as much stuff there. There was nothing there. That gym was empty. And all of a sudden, things started going there. And they took everything from Seaberry Street and put it there. There's barrels and barrels and barrels of garland and bows. There's all kinds of Christmas decoration. There's all the lights for the outside lights within the city, cases and cases. There's the big globes that go on trees. Matter of fact, the park department needs a few of them. When we were there Sunday, some of their globes had, had broken. I just think it was ridiculous. I, I mean, I don't know what's going on with the Armory. And if somebody's not going to buy it, then I think the city needs to take a look at, what are we going to do to save it? Because that is a historic building. And in Fall River, you just knock everything down and you don't care about things being historic and maybe we can get CPA money, whatever. We need to try to save that. But Mr. Denmead, how much is it going to cost us for these metal fab buildings or containers that you have? And what are the sizes of them?
Well, the, uh, the containers, uh, that are coming over from the school department, they're being donated to us from the school department. They're free.
Okay, so we don't-
So we, there's, there's no cost whatsoever to that.
We've already paid for that on the school side, so thank you that they're not judging us.
We're getting them back.
What sizes are they?
Uh, they're 40, they're 40-footers. So they're the big, they're the biggest ones you can get.
Yeah.
They're biggest ones. So we got three of those coming in, possibly two more down the road. So, um, it, it, it's a big benefit. It's a big boost. At the D C M complex now, we've cleared out, uh, a space to relocate some of the, uh, materials that are, uh, that are at the Armory. In, uh, my discussions with Mr. Bernato, we can relocate some of that. But once we clear out that backyard and get the rest of the apparatus and the rest of them vehicles down there, we can bring some of the stuff that's been at that Armory for all this time. And, uh, it's just, this, um, just a matter of where are we going to put the, everything that's been piled up all this time? It's just, once we clear it out, then we can put the stuff that needs to be stored in that place.
You know, the issue that I have is a lot of the equipment there, especially our trucks and all that, in the, um, garages and stuff. If those are not temperature controlled, or we're not starting them up, moving them around, the rubber and all that, it, 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 use, it, it's not good. Things start to rot out and stuff. So is there something in plan to do that and, you know, to keep those machines started up? Because you don't use them in the summer, but you use them in the winter. Uh, I, last time I was by there, they were washing them down and, uh, so I, I was happy to see that they were taking care of the equipment, um, through the summer. But that's one of the concerns that they had. The other thing is in the Lewiston Street, there's a big tent. This humongous tent, and that was supposed to be a storage place. One windstorm, that tent would blow. I don't know. I think, uh, who did we have here for a while? They've got so many people at D C M, I can't. Was it Paisano?
It was, um, it was a Pat, Mr. Mr. Pontiano.
Patziano?
Mr. Pontiano picked that up in, uh, in auction in New Hampshire about seven, eight years ago. And, uh, paid $3,000 for it. And I'm going to suggest that we stick it on our online auction. And, uh, because, uh, to put that up or spend any money on any, any type of storage facility in, uh, that's not going to last us and we're not going to put the time and effort into doing a true evaluation, uh, on putting, uh, something out there that's going to last, and it's just not worth it.
That is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. It's almost like a tent that you'd put up because somebody was having an outdoor wedding. But it's not that thick.
No, when you're looking for-
And that we're going to store things in. It's crazy.
Yeah, we, we had high hopes for that, you know, when we found it.
We did.
Well, you weren't even, you weren't even here. You weren't even here at that time.
But, uh, you know, when it was discovered, you know, that it had been sitting, you know, unopened in boxes for years, uh, we thought maybe it would be an option, at least on a temporary basis. It's really not, so.
No.
We're going to, uh, you know, as soon as the Director of City Operations, he's, or she's going to work with, uh, Mr. Denmead, um, and, uh, the folks in facilities, and we're going to develop some, some long-term solutions.
But honestly, I can applaud you for trying to get rid of storage spaces that's costing us money. And figuring out other ways where we can store things. But really, what has to happen? Lewiston Street needs an overhaul. That place is pitiful. It's an embarrassment to the city for anybody to have to go to the D C M building. It absolutely is. And I'd like to see what plans the administration has to tackling that. Um, because it really is an embarrassment. But, Mr. Denmead, thank you for trying to come up with some solutions and good luck over at D C M.
Thank you.
I've heard good things, so I'm, I have my fingers crossed that things will work well. And thank you for what you've done so far. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C1, Councilor Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, make a statement, actually, Mr. Denmead. You're doing a fine job. You came in, you filled that role. And it's literally the round peg in the round hole. Like, you are doing such a wonderful job. I think the people at home should know that. Morale is up. You've saved the city money. You're making the city money. You have great organizational skills and leadership skills, and you're doing such a fine job. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C2, Councilor Deanna.
Yeah, this is off topic, but seeing the subject came up. When the city council transferred the, uh, Armory to the R D A for them to sell the building, they had a-
Councilor, Councilor, we're going to stay on topic. I know the subject might have come up, but it was both storage things that were put there.
This goes along a little bit with what Councilor in seat 6 averted to also.
Okay, but let's get back to the stories. Go ahead.
There was a time limit on the purchase. When construction would begin, we far exceeded that. There was a reverter clause that if things weren't done by the timeline, the building would be returned to the ownership of the city. That's where the CPA funding could come in, that the city would get the building back and we could start doing that sort of thing. So my question is, are we getting the Armory back?
So, I can't speak to-
Because we could also use it for storage if we had ownership again.
So, there is an interested party. Uh, in fact, there's two interested parties in buying it. Um, that party at this point, um, has a license to do due diligence, um, and get, uh, his engineers and, uh, other folks into that place to get the best sense of what it would take, uh, to rehabilitate the Armory, uh, to the kind of space that he would need it to be for his intended purpose.
Is it storage?
I'm sorry?
Is it intended purpose storage?
No, the, the person, uh, from what I understand, would want to actually use it as a, as a space in, in the city that has, is like a venue, uh, you know, has, um, the kind of thing that would attract people. Um, and I don't know what the details are specifically of that, because it was just, uh, generally communicated to me. Uh, but that's an ongoing process. I know there's another person, uh, who wants to do the same thing. So from what I understand, that property is actively in the process, um, of being put through its paces by folks that have a genuine interest in, uh, purchasing it and developing it.
Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you. That I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat 7, Councilor Posen.
Mr. Denmead, quick question. You mentioned the trolleys. They're all no good?
Yeah, they were no good. What we had, actually, we had, uh, one purchaser come from California to get one. I don't know how they got it back, but it sat, they, they removed it from the yard. And it sat across the street for a couple of days, but eventually, um, I'm sure they got, uh, a truck to, to get it back there.
So we have zero now. They're all gone?
I believe there's one left. I believe there's one tucked, there might be one tucked away in the back, but it, it, it's beyond repair and it's on, up for auction. But I have been looking at pricing for a new trolley. I have been looking at it. Uh, I, I've come down to two vendors. I believe one's in Texas and one's in California. They're, um, but I am looking at pricing for them. I hope and, I'd like to, I'd like to acquire one. Um, they're, they're great. They're actual revenue makers. I mean, we could raise revenue with them. People love them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can attest to it. My kids at the school have gone on the trolley trips around the city. It's so much better than going on a yellow school bus personally. So it's an experience to give our kids and be something to definitely look forward to.
When we hired out the trolley, we had it booked all the time.
Yeah.
And people just, we, they would call from everywhere, weddings, everything. It was great.
Could it, would it be possible, once you get some figures together, to come back to us with that? I appreciate that. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilor C3, Councilor Keddie, any questions?
To that point, really quick, is would upper money be, um, available for?
Uh, I was-
What triggered me is the enjoyment for children, what you just said and the, uh, the fact that it's profitable.
It was, it was, it was suggested that it may be eligible for that. And I s- that's why I started seeking out, uh, And I, that's why I started seeking out pricing on it right away. Because it may qualify under opa.
I would ask the city administrator to communicate with the mayor with regard to and getting back to us. It doesn't have to be a resolution or just getting back to each council to determine whether or not it's eligible for one or two, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. One, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I brought this up at a recent council meeting, maybe about a year ago. But about three or four years ago, this council has taken a vote to do feasibility studies for DPW. To look at a feasibility study for Central Fire Station and Stanley Station. Do we have any, because I'm supportive of the projects, I think we just need to stop moving on these. And I think, as opposed to just doing these projects piecemeal, I'd rather have a master plan on what the building projects are. And really just kind of prioritize which projects are gonna be obviously upfront in terms. And so that this council can start talking about funding mechanisms, because I think it's long overdue. With, you know, obviously Lewiston Street, the incinerator. So if we're gonna, if that's the space we're gonna operate, let's really look at creating a complex over there for DPW. You know, maybe the Parks Department or whoever else needs to be in there. And then the other buildings that we're dealing with in terms of the Fire Department. I mean, there's a number of stations up that are on the capital improvement plan or have been discussed to be put on the capital improvement plan that, you know, I think some of them require significant renovation. So whether it's new construction or renovation, I'd like to see something brought down from the administration so that we can just at least start having those conversations and dialogue with, you know, which projects we're gonna be dealing with. Because if not, it's gonna get away from us. And I think, you know, the armory is a good is a good, you know, example of letting that kind of go down. And now we've got a developer who's looking at it, but before it gets to the point where the, you know, the repairs are astronomical, I'd rather just get ahead of it. And I tell you that probably if we did a $20 million building, you know, a new building for DPW, if we worked on it four or five years ago, it would have been a lot cheaper. You're probably gonna be looking at $30, $40 million now for a project that size, just because of the construction costs that we're seeing. So I'd just like to get that on the table so we can just have some discussion about which projects we wanna fund. Because I do agree, the storage needs to take place, but before we do that, let's just get the master plan. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. There being no further questions, I just wanna let you know that tent that you referred to there, it could be a wedding tent? Might wanna check with the clerk's office, because they perform weddings here in City Hall. They might need the tent at some point in time before we get rid of it. Next, we have item number four. It's a resolution discussion, plans to improve city parks and baseball fields.
Motion to lift.
Second.
Motion to lift from the House meeting by Councilor Pereira, second by Councilor Pozo. On favor?
Aye.
Councilor Seat Six, Councilor Pereira.
This has, I guess, been here for quite a while, since...
It was tabled in March of 22, March 22nd of '22.
I think that we all need to be cognizant of the fact that there's ten park workers, ten laborers that are out there with 29 parks and playgrounds. So the only way you're gonna improve the parks and get things done is to hire more people. That's the reality. And I was at a park board meeting recently. And part of the problems that I saw was people were using parks to dump trash, sleeping there, doing drugs there, needles in the parks, not all the parks, but some of the parks. And that's why I'd asked for cameras, because at least the police could check that out. But there's also people playing volleyball. And they're putting these nets up in different areas. Well then, why don't we have a volleyball net set up somewhere? Why don't we have another football field? The Titans are always looking to play football. They pay to use the field. Money coming in. We don't have a soccer field. People always want a soccer field. We don't have a softball field that's in quality shape that you can get traveling teams. Why are we not doing work with that? I was with Brian Bishop, who plays on soccer, on softball teams. He goes all over the place. I said, why, you know, wouldn't you ever come to Fall River? They stay in the hotels, they eat our food, they shop here. Why are we not? Kids have baseball leagues. My granddaughter was on a basketball traveling team. You should see what they have in other places as far as different venues. Like, why aren't we doing that? And I don't think with only 10 people in the park department and the amount of money, I think Counselor Kadim said it was, what, $2,000 per park and playground on an average? So what do you expect? I mean, I just think, we've got pickleballs now popping up all over the place. I guess that's the new in thing. There's baseball fields that aren't being used, because you can't get coaches. Nobody wants to coach. But if you can do soccer field, are the fields that people are gonna use? I think that that's what the park department needs to focus on. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Pozo. I'm sorry, Councilor Seat One, that's Anna Friar. Counselor Kadim, then we'll go to you next, Councilor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we've had this conversation before, and I think it just comes back to, you know, quality of life and how do we make Fall River more attractive, right? So we just had an individual come down talking about the cost of living associated with the, you know, the South Coast Rail, things like that. So, you know, part of the quality of life is the recreational facilities and something that I've been trying to advocate for, because you see a lot at different levels. So it's not just youth, right? It's adults as well. And in order for us to get there, I think, as you and I have talked about, Mr. Administrator, is the open space and recreational plan. Just going through, coming up with a master plan of all our parks. And to Counselor in Seat Six's point, part of this is that as legislative body, we've got to recognize that there's additional investment that's needed besides what we just give. $2,000 per park isn't enough. But part of that's gonna come from the administration letting us know what the man-hours are for each park, right? I think as a collective group, we need to really just establish what the benchmark's gonna be, right? And say, okay, these are the quality of, quality level of fields that we wanna see for the community, for community purposes. You look at the Highland Basketball Park, that place is absolutely filled, like, year-round, right? And it's good to see. So now you start, my daughter's on travel soccer, you go down to Britlin Park. That's another hidden gem. There's basketball courts there. Haven't been touched in a long time. I think if you can upgrade those basketball courts, right, but we've got unofficial turf that's there. That was there, I wanna say back in, I don't know, 2012, 13, that was put in. So that membrane already has to be replaced, right? So we haven't had those conversations about the capital improvement of replacing that field. And part of it is concussion rating too. So we've got our youth on there. What are we doing to maintain? The fence overall around that area is in decent shape. It's starting to peel. But there's a lot more that can be done. But I think it's a commitment level from the legislative body. But a plan coming down from the administration recognizing that to get people to wanna live in Fall River, work in Fall River, and stay in Fall River, that we've gotta have an outlet, right? And some of it's gotta be free space. You go down President Ave. We did a great job with the basketball and the playground next to Morin. But we haven't really kind of invested in the middle portion of that park, right? So the baseball field, and maybe we're doing some work now, but, you know, there's not a lot of investment there. It's not really necessarily inviting outside of the winter when everybody goes sledding. But these are the types of things that we need to start looking at, and the investment's gonna be a lot, right? We talk about Kennedy Park with the skating. We talk about all these other parks. And especially when we have a lot of neighborhoods, incentives tracks where, you know, they're pocket parks. And we've gotta pay more attention to that, right? And I think part of this, before we can even have this conversation, is what's the plan? What are we doing? What's the expectation? And are we prepared to put the money aside, right? So is it through capital improvement? Is it through the revenues that are coming through from marijuana licenses, the impact fees and sales tax? Are we going to bond for different projects? Are we using CDA money? What are we doing and how do we get there? And then from that standpoint, once we set where we want the criteria to be and the expectations is, what does Ms. Smith need for staffing, right? Because I think we can't just invest all this money and ignore the fact that it's gonna take manpower, right? So I'd be just curious to see how many, what's the man-hours to maintain one park, right? What's the man-hours to maintain Kennedy Park, Highland Park, North Park, you know, and Britlin Park? And how do we get there? And I think then part of that is also the equipment, right? Because that's the other piece, right? So we need to have the right equipment that's efficient and effective to cut the grass and do whatever we need to do. So we can't, we can't be, you know, penny foolish and, I mean, what's the saying?
Something pound foolish, penny wise.
Whatever it is. Thank you. Penny wise, pound foolish when it comes to some of this stuff, right? Because I think when you look at the equipment, the last time we've had a significant update in all the equipment through parks and DPW was just a couple of years ago. And I'm sure some of that equipment being used year-round is already ready for its end of life and needs to be replaced. So I think there's a lot of conversation that needs to go around this. So I'd just like to request, I know there's a lot of planning and documents that go into it, but I think SERP had maybe some and I know they get services from us, there's some funding that they get from each community. So get so many hours, I don't know if we can use those hours to go through for the open space master plan, open space and recreational master plan and come back down before the committee and the council and have those conversations as to exactly what we wanna see and what you folks have prioritized and made a commitment to. Just so that we can start talking about the funding mechanism, so. Is there anything that you see in the near future that's gonna be a significant requirement for you that you need to maintain?
Well, we, as you know, over the past years, we've had significant monies and significant park projects take place. Just for example, the Kathy Assad Playground was redone, the Damaris Playground was redone. We now, at Kennedy Park, we did a complete renovation of that ball field with, you know, fencing and backstops and new dugout areas. The pickleball tennis courts down at the bottom of Kennedy Park, that's another project that's ongoing. But as Counselor Kadim stated, these are things that we can't just put it there and turn on back and walk away. We have to be able to maintain them. And unfortunately, as I've come down here multiple times and said, we used to have crews in individual parks. We don't have that anymore. We don't even have the buildings to provide them that service anymore. Because we've either, the buildings have either been, you know, demolished or they're just beyond repair. And each group used to be four and five laborers that took care of maybe three or four parcels of land. So the manpower is gonna significantly be an issue. I mean, I understand that when we have budgets and we have whatever, not that the park department is considered, we're almost the luxury. We're almost what you don't spend your money on, because we have to spend for police, for fire, for streets, for... And we almost get pushed down the line. And I understand that to a certain extent. But there is a quality of life issue that does have to be addressed. And unfortunately, with the situation we've been in, has not. Recently, have we poured a lot more money and have I been involved with a lot more improvements and seen a lot more improvements over the last five or so years? Absolutely. But the equipment, I mean, there are vehicles in my department that are from 2008. There are vehicles that are 2013. I think I do agree that maybe the city needs to get a cyclical plan of replacing equipment. I have mowers that we are replacing. We've done some replacing. But some of those mowers were from 2007. I mean, luckily, our mechanic is like a magician and pieces things together. And makes, you know, he made a snowplow out of an old tractor. But, you know, it comes to a point where I've asked for this Kubota. I was, I've become infamous for asking for this Kubota, and it's 2022, and we don't have the Kubota yet. So it's not that I don't ask. I try to be careful with what I ask for, so as not to appear greedy. Because I know there are other things to be done. But I mean, I think that we do have, we have taken significant steps in the right direction. Do we need a plan? Absolutely. I think we do need to go back to not just one location where the men work out of. Because I think what happens is if you have those separate locations, these individuals can take pride in those three pieces of property or those four pieces of property, what they maintain. And you can hold people accountable, a little bit more accountable for how it's maintained.
Plus the Highlands.
I mean, we do have, as far as the softball, we do have a softball league. We do have a softball field. But it is monopolized by one league, and I can't change that. It's an adult league. We don't charge fees to our adult leagues, which is not something that other cities and towns do do. We do have the soccer field, which is a premier field at Britlin Park. There is another soccer field at Travasso's. And I have purchased nets to be installed there. But if we're gonna use it as a combination football soccer, then you'd really have to have those nets to be able to be removed. So it's not that we don't have a plan in place, but you need money.
So, and that's what I, and I recognize that. And I think part of it is, is I guess I'm cognizant of the fact it's not gonna happen overnight, right? So, but to your point, we have to start somewhere, right? And I know we're starting with some of the equipment, but we need to have those plans. And I'm not suggesting that we create plans, like a master plan, just to sit on the shelf and not refer to it. We need to know, as a council, what we have going on so that we can allocate the monies accordingly, right? Because I think the problem is, is that we get so caught up what's in front of us at the moment, okay? And then we don't have the plans to say, okay, well, what about parks? What about, you know, the Police Department? What about the Fire Department? What about DPW? Because if it's a fire station, then we're just focused on the, hyper-focused on the fire station. If it's, whatever it is, right? At the end of the day, we, from a management standpoint, you know, you folks, I'm not suggesting how to manage your department. So if management is, if management decision is to locate people in different locations and then you feel that's gonna be the most efficient way to get people motivated, then so be it. From my standpoint, I need to know what the costs are and how do we get to a level that we're all happy with? And then how much is that gonna cost us? And how much manpower do you need for that? And I think when we start talking about, you know, the amount of revenue that's being lost, I would tell you that there's significant revenue being lost, right? So whether it's the softball fields, the problem is, is that we have essentially one softball field that they like to play on, right? Because of the quality. So now if you go and invest money in the other softball fields, then you would be able to spread out, you know, where the games are gonna be playing. But then it's also, you know, how do you get these fields to be used by multiple sports, right? And not wear down the grass, right? So we gotta talk about fertilization, because we do nothing with fertilization. We don't talk about the safety of the ground, because we just let folks go and play, and there could be ruts and torn ACLs, concussions, whatever the case may be. But so if that's what we're talking about, if we're talking about fertilization plans, if we're talking about significantly improving the parks so that they're playable and we're gonna get to a point where we can charge fees for it, then I think we need to have that conversation. And I know it's not gonna happen, you know, two years, five years from now. It's a 10, 15-year plan. But I wanna have those discussions, because we've been having this discussion for the last at least six years, right? About where we're going with that. So from my standpoint, I think it's, there's something to be said when you see residents, you know, utilizing taxpayers' money, like, you know, the Highland Park playing basketball. And you drive by during the summer and you see all those kids playing basketball. And then you see programs for, you know, the blacktop tournaments and things like that, where it's nice locations. And everybody has the best amenities at a public location. And I think that's what we need to take pride on, pride in. Because there are other communities in the Commonwealth that are doing it, that are committed to it. And I've said this before, we've got CPC. We don't spend a whole lot of CPA money. I say CPC, because it's Community Preservation Committee and CCON that I'm referring to. But Community Preservation Act money, right, for recreation. We don't spend any of that money. Or I shouldn't say we don't spend any of it. But a good majority of that is not coming back to those projects. And quite frankly, it's taxpayer money, right? And I think we should be taking that taxpayer money that's already coming out of the taxes and being applied to some of these recreational facilities and identifying what it is. But I'd like to personally say, I know I'm long-winded, but I'd like to personally see maybe potentially discussion about how do we get to that point where we have an open space and recreational plan? That this council potentially does a joint meeting again with the park board, just to stop that dialogue on where do we go from here? What do we see? What do we see far of being from a recreational standpoint in the next 15 to 20 years? Now, how do we get there, right? And we all committed because I, and I know councils change, I know the, you know, the park board changes. But if you've got a plan and you can kind of refer back to it and we've got input from the community, then the buy-in is a lot better than just, you know, one or two people making this decision. I think we'll have that commitment and then that's the only way we change, you know, your funding of $2,000. So until that happens, then I'm just going to keep saying that we're only funding each park $2,000.
A little more now.
Just a little, not much, but it depends what you're included. Because I'm taking out your, I mean,
My maintenance.
Your CSO is like half your budget, right? So, you know, the CSO charge, I'm not even going there.
But just to answer your question about CPA, presently, we do have Maplewood Park lighting going in with the utilization of CPA. And there's also Father Kelly Park, which is that softball field, lighting with CPA. And there is a CPA project that Mr. Lima had put forth for the Lower Kennedy Park. And my understanding is that was brought back up to the CPA because it needed additional funding to plan that out a little bit more. So there are three projects presently with CPA.
Yeah, and I don't want anybody on the CPA committee to take that as a slight. I just, I personally don't think that we do a good enough job of utilizing and leveraging that money for public purposes that truly benefit the public across the board, whether it's for historic housing or open space and recreation. I think me personally, we need to do a better job. I mean, CCON just spent $2 million in CPA monies to purchase acres of lands for recreational space.
We don't need any more.
No, but listen, they're not making, they're not making,
We have.
They're not making any more land. But part of it is, is that, you know, we're also missing the boat in terms of providing residents pickleball, flag football, soccer and all these other recreational activities that could be, quite honestly, generating money for us, you know?
Well, they're all outside organizations too that ask for these. None of them are run through city organizations or through the parks like they used to.
But I'm also, I'm okay with that as well because I think it provides an outlet for our youth, right? So we can't, there's no way that the city is going to be able to create a recreational department that provides all these. So we need these outside agencies to partner with us. But I, but I think before we can get there and actually make, generate revenue, we've got to figure out what the plan is.
Absolutely, because we depend on them to help us maintain these facilities. So you really can't start charging when they're doing half the work to maintain some of those properties. So it's a little bit difficult, it's a catch 22.
Thank you, Councilor. I think you were right on point. I don't think you were insulting the CPA committee at all. I think you, your marks were right on it. Question I do have is, do we have sprinkler systems in the fields, the baseball fields, soccer fields?
We do have some sprinkler systems. Some of the sprinkler systems over the years have been damaged by, you know, in different areas, either by tents or other items as such penetrating the sprinkler systems without any, we don't know that they're damaged until you go to use them in the spring. If the sprinkler system or the tent is erected in the fall or the winter and the sprinkler system shut off, we don't even know it's damaged till we go to use it again. So we're not sure when the damage occurred. So there are some sprinkler systems, some of the leagues have installed them. And there are other sprinkler systems that the city has installed.
Because I will tell you this, if you did a football or soccer field and the children are running on it and then you're using it back and forth and you don't sprinkle that water the next day, that grass will never keep up with the cleats being run up and down. So you'll basically destroy any grass that you put there, especially if you're not fertilizing it, cutting it at the right height and it's not getting any water. And all it takes is five or six days in a row of practice, practice, practice without any water and that grass will disappear and you'll be playing on mud. So that's something that we have to be very careful with. As someone who has seen many fields in my life and coached many different sports, it's, the maintenance of it is very highly, and other communities do a pretty good job of maintaining it. And water is essential to keeping grass alive and fertilizing is essential to make it come the right way. We do it in our homes, you know, anyone that's got a good lawn, they're fertilizing and cutting grass and watering it all the time. And we're not even walking on it that much. But if you have a field out there, soccer field and a football field that's being constantly used by a bunch of people and you're not giving any water, that's just a disaster waiting to happen. Councilor, seat seven, Councilor Bozo.
Yeah, so I'll echo what Councilor Kadim said about a plan. And I think, I watch it every summer and I look outside my office. The splash pad is busy over at Travassos, but the rest of it's just kind of there. It's got beautiful grass because it's not being used. It's very quiet. I would, I would echo what he said in having a plan because I think at the end of the day, it's investment in our youth. And the other thing too, and I look over down the street over at Lafayette Park and I had said to City Administrator Aiken yesterday or the day before, that little house in the back corner there is completely tagged with graffiti. And it's going to, it's going to end up just like the building at Kennedy Park that is in complete disarray. You know, these are things that we need to prioritize and it's no slight to you, Nancy, you're right. You don't have enough people to do it. So at some point, we have to advocate for more. And again, it's a quality of life issue. And if you're going, if you're driving down the city and you see that Lafayette Park, you're like, ew, I don't want to go there, you know? But then you have other places like Travassos that's underutilized. It's a beautiful, beautiful piece of grass that could be utilized for so much more. And I think we could levy that to really be an advantage to all of us. So I'll echo what he said, you know, a plan would be fabulous and really a long forward plan, not only including how we use the space, how can we put it out there, but also the manpower to back it up. I yield, thank you.
Just to answer that question, Travassos was permitted out.
Yeah.
But we don't know, it's permitted out on certain nights of the week, but we don't know when they go or don't go because they take a seasonal permit. So sometimes they don't end up going. And as far as the Lafayette building, I did speak to the sheriff, Naomi, from the sheriff's office, and have offered up that building for her training to, teach the inmates to use the graffiti machine. I'm like, anytime, we have a perfect spot for you to train. So I have had conversations with her about that particular building. It's funny that you would mention that one because it was the building that I did have a conversation with.
It seems like that one really took, really took a hit over the past, you know, the league, the league there is not really operational as much, there's less people around it. So it's kind of fallen to disarray. Let me just ask a follow-up question if I could regarding the permitting at Travassos. Is that, is that the football we're referring to?
There was a football, there were a couple of youth soccer groups that used it on, I want to say Mondays and Fridays.
But no access to lights?
They did have, the football group used lights.
But not the soccer groups?
Soccer group did not.
Just because they didn't request it?
Just because that was the times they requested.
Okay, that makes sense.
And it's a little more difficult as, as we've talked about before, our lighting systems are a little bit archaic and can't, we can put them on timers, but we can't generate just certain days. It would be seven days a week or if it's raining and someone's not going there, they would go on just the same. So it's a little bit difficult.
Yeah, and I think about the lighting too. It's, when you look at some of the parks, and I just use Travassos, I literally spend all my days there. You know, I look out the window, I see it. There's not enough lighting in general in that park. So you, you know, you go through the splash pad, that's pretty well lit and then you just go into this darkness of nothing. And there's really no lighting around that track to keep trouble away from that area. You know, it's a dead end, I know, it's a dead end street, there's not much going on down there and you could find yourself in a problem if you're looking for it. So I think, you know, we're talking about that plan, I hope that would be something to be considered as well. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, seat eight, Councilor Washington.
Thank you, Councilor President. I, point of information first, $2,000 in a park, that's what each park is allocated. Can you just, someone just give me information on that? What, a year each park? Like, what does that use for?
I don't, I don't know if it was $2,000.
It's a little bit more than that.
If you take, if you take the CSO charge out, if you take the electric and then some of the equipment maintenance, how much actually goes into the parks? It's about $2,000.
That's horrific.
I think so.
That's horrible. So I guess.
Listen, maybe it's $3,000 or $4,000 or $5,000.
It's awful, I mean, I just,
If we're not talking about $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 into parks, then that,
We can have them get back to us as to what, the best guess in ever would be is what we actually spend in the parks. We do have an awful lot of parks.
That's, that's, that number is pretty, pretty shocking to me. So my next question would be, what is considered fully staffing for you? So you, is, do you have 10 staff members for all these parks? What do you consider fully staffed and was it ever fully staffed?
Well, we used to have 40-plus workers at one point, but I'm going some years back. But at this point, my full staff would be 13.
13, and then how many parks do you have?
29.
29 parks, 13 staff members and do you?
We do median strips, all like Brayton Avenue, Eastern Avenue, Plymouth Avenue. We also cut all of that as well as the greens, some of the rotaries. Like if you see Bradbury Green or,
Rotary on Pleasant Street.
All, yeah, all those.
Well, you can't afford to give you more than $2,000 because you can't have people do the work. All right, so 40, so 40 would at some point?
Well, we used to, we used to have a complement of laborers. We used to have a complement of comfort station attendants, you know, we used to have seasonal workers that, the seasonal worker now is completely different because they can't work more than 19 hours a week. So before our seasonal workers were full-time workers. To have a seasonal worker for 19 hours a week, they're working two and a half days. And the bottom line is, the laborers in the park department right now start at $16 an hour. So I have a very difficult time maintaining a labor force.
Yeah.
The maximum pay is 16 and my senior people are 19.
And then my next question is, maybe the city administrator can answer it. Why aren't we charging the adult leagues? So if we're charging the youth leagues?
We don't.
We don't charge anybody?
We don't charge anyone.
Is that a new thing? Is that just always been?
It's been forever.
Why? Is that a, I just, I'm curious, why? If you don't, it's okay, I'm just, it's just.
So I mean, I think you can, there's a lot of, there's probably a lot of reasons one might offer why we don't do that. I think what it really comes down to is that there's a tremendous amount of pressure from the folks that run those leagues for there not to be a charge. You know, frankly, you can take that explanation and put it with a lot of things in the city that we either can't charge for or don't do. And the change sometimes, you know, requires significant sea change, I think both, you know, from the administration and the council and a lot of folks working together to say, you know what? We're going to generate revenue from a resource that we have that's a good resource that is worth charging for. And I think that's certainly something we should be talking about. I will say that just in the context of this larger conversation, between CDA and ARPA, there have been just millions of dollars put into the parks recently. Now, that doesn't mean there's a plan, right? So I just, I want us to acknowledge because I, I think it probably, you know, it's an easy narrative to say, oh, no one's doing anything and we got to do something. But that's not really what's happening. What's happening is that there's a lot of individual amazing projects that are being done and those need to be followed up with a comprehensive, clear plan as to where we go from here in order to make sure that the improvements that have been done don't go to waste.
Yeah, that's kind of what my takeaway was from my colleague in seat one, that you have, you're doing these great projects, but there's, what's the sustainability plan to keep them in motion? What's the infrastructure to keep that continuing? So I support my colleague in seat one. I guess I'm just kind of blown away by some of this information I didn't know. I think that that is absolutely, I think it's essential to the quality of life in the city. I mean, I know you said, well, you know, other things go in other places, but I was just in Boston this weekend in the middle of like high rises. Like you'll drive up, you'll look like endless close there and then there's this beautiful soccer field, like, and people playing on the soccer field in the middle of like, you know, this urban jungle. So I mean, I think that we could do that here. I guess the plan is, but some of these figures are kind of alarming to me. I'm, you know, just, that's why I'm asking questions. But you answered some of them, I guess I can follow up on them. And with that, I yield, Councilor President.
Thank you, Councilor. Before I call this out, Councilor, Nancy,
Yes.
Don't a lot of the league people do a lot of volunteering stuff themselves and get out there?
Yes, that's what I said.
They contribute as well, that's why they're not paying.
Like they pay for the line?
They savages a lot of money by doing a lot of their stuff.
They do improvements and that is another reason why it's been very difficult for us to charge. Years back, we didn't charge, but as I said, we had individual workers in each park. And that particular gentleman would, before he left, they used to work from, I think, 7:30 to 4:30. So now their hours are from 7:00 to 3:00 and now they leave at 3:00. But when they worked at that time, that particular gentleman that worked in that park would prepare that field, he'd line that field, the grass would be cut, everything would be done in-house. We no longer have that. We depend a lot on the leagues like Maplewood to,
The leagues come up and that's part of why we're not charging them.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, there are a lot of leagues that do, but there are, we could designate certain areas of, to be used by multiple groups that perhaps we could lease out. I mean, I know when this council talked about the high school fields and turfing the high school fields, it was because they would be able to rent these fields out to these travel baseball teams and that type of thing. We don't have that same.
Is there a policy and procedure in place for, like, if you rent out this, if you're using this field, you have to do A, B, C, and D to maintain it? You don't pay us, you know, $100 to use it, but this is what you do? So everybody's equally sharing the, no?
No, and that would be different because, take an example, we have a turf field at Britland Park and we wouldn't have a turf baseball field. So the baseball people would have to do something there every single day to maintain that field, while the turf field would relatively maintain itself for a period of time. Like we go in and we groom that field, but we don't have to groom that turf like we need to cut grass. So it's, each location is kind of,
Unique.
Yes, unique in its own way, yes.
Yield.
I yield.
Thank you. Councilor, seat two, Councilor here.
Yeah, the first thing I'd like to say, if you want to hear a staggering number, is the park department is expected to contribute to water and sewer CSO charge $252,000 a year.
Every department.
I've never understood quite how or why, but anyways, so there's a staggering number, 252, a quarter of a million dollars. It's not an easy task. The only thing I want to make one comment, and I thought about it when you said you used to have a staff at each park. As we get bigger and better and we make these investments, which I agree with pretty much what everyone has said, we also have to start considering the vandalism and safety issues. Also, back then, when you had those individuals, we also had park police.
Yes.
And I think that's an important component as well. Now, was, you know, are we going to consider bringing back park police? Probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we're going to move down this road and try to, you know, as a quality of life issue and get more people out there. That's basically all I have to say, thank you.
Councilor, seat one, Councilor Kadim, do you have another follow?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to get the numbers out and similar to my colleague in seat two. So the total expense for parks is $519,250. So right off the bat,
$252.
At least just under half is going to CSO, so you got to remove that, right? Because it's not going to the maintain the parks. We've got electricity for $85,000. We've got heat for $10,000. So we finally get to buildings, grounds, repair, maintenance, $55,000, so I'll include that. Vehicle repair maintenance, not going towards the parks. I mean, obviously you need the vehicles, but I don't count that as an expense for the parks. Other repairs and maintenance, $25,000, so I'll include that. Another $25,000 for other purchase services, not sure what that is, but we'll assume it's going to the parks. And then you start getting to everything else, which is, you know, tools, groundskeeper supplies, $2,500. So when it's all said and done, it's $107,000 that's appropriated for parks. So how many parks?
29.
Divided by 29. I was off, $3,700 per park.
Well, that's because last year,
It's a lot of money now.
The good news of this is that $519 is up from $424.
Okay.
So that's probably where you got your figure.
All for the CSO, so I wasn't, I wasn't far off.
The total was $424 and 22 and it's $519 and 23. So you may have been correct in your last figure.
All right. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. There'll be no further questions, I take a motion to, Councilor, seat seven, Councilor Bozo.
Yeah, real quick, through Councilor in seat one. So can we get this ball rolling? What can we do here to get this ball rolling?
You can advocate the mayor's office and have them submit a couple of plans. The first, open space and recreational plan and also a building and infrastructure plan so that we can talk about our buildings. So I'll support that letter too, I'll sign off on it.
So, Mr. Aiken, can we, can we start this conversation about getting a plan put together for our parks?
So there was a plan, I think 2015? What was the last?
I think our open space, I think our open space plan is good to, till twenty-three or twenty-four? Was that, was that a citywide open space plan?
Right, I'm just asking when it was done.
Yeah.
You've got me, I think, two thousand fifteen.
Okay. So even though that plan is technically good for a couple more years, we're not going to rest on that. My first step is, is now that we have at least an acting planner, um, somebody who is, is sort of working through, running that role, is not necessarily being paid or assigned as a planner specifically, but is trying out for the role, uh, Mr. Perano, uh, if some of you saw the article the other day. We've been without anybody in that role and Mr. Aguirre has essentially been filling that role for months. Uh, and so even though Mr. Perano is not a planner by training, he is in the midst of getting his, uh, master's in public administration, does have some of that, um, academic credential. And so that's something I've spoken with him about now that he's in that position is, is one of the first big projects I want him to undertake is to identify to me what needs to be done in order to flesh out the plan we already have, make it current, incorporate what we've already done and really look at our cost per park and how we can begin to reallocate resources. So, um, the answer to your question is yes. Um, it's at least in the infant stages of happening. You know, I wanted to give him, you know, a few weeks to kind of get into the, the role before he jumped in, but we haven't really had a planner for a while. Uh, unfortunately, the planner who was there, um, moved on, uh, to a different community and, um, it's sort of hamstringing us a little bit. No excuses, but just the reality of, of working in a city, um, and municipal government, but that's, you know, that's a direction we're, we're going in. In terms of, you know, a, a bigger master plan for open space and facilities, I think that actually goes significantly beyond the plan that we have. So that, so we have a plan around parks, but I think what, uh, Councilor Kadeem is talking about is something much more comprehensive, um, that really tries to create, um, you know, relationships between a number of ongoing departments and plans and how we intend to grow and, uh, keep those things healthy as they grow. And that's something I feel very strongly about that we have to do. And I think very soon, we're going to actually have the people in place to do that. Uh, and that's something in my nine months in the job, we haven't had.
Fair. Two requests. One, can we, can we get, can I get a copy of that plan from two thousand fifteen?
Sure.
That'd be, that'd be good to look at. That's fine, PDF's fine. The second question is to Nancy, would it be fruitful, maybe in the next few months, to have a joint meeting of the park board and the city council to really begin to discuss what are some immediate things that, because again, you're the boots on the ground, you, you know what the, what the direct needs are. Can we have that meeting?
I, I believe this has been tossed around a few times and I'm sure, I think that the park board, with all respect to the council, feel, feels like you have a much busier schedule with subcommittee meetings, so if the council presents a date and time that they want to meet with the bo- park board, I am certain that the park board would be open to that.
Great, we'll do that. Councilor Kadeem, you wanna, you and I want to head that to get that scheduled?
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, and Councilor Poso, I also like that subliminal, can we get the ball rolling, talking about the parks?
No pun intended.
I like that.
Thank you.
There being no further questions, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Mr. President. I meant, motion to refer a former vice.
Yes, I prefer first. Counsel, motion to refer made by Counselor, Deion is the second.
I'll second that.
Where are we referring it to?
For body.
Aye.
Or do you want to table this?
It's up to the council.
No.
I think we should probably table and send just, till we have that, that other meeting. Or do you want to refer to a committee on economic development?
What's your chair, what's your thing, Andrew?
I will, I'll do that. Can I, motion to refer.
I am mental affairs.
Health, services.
Yeah, I want to refer the, the resolution about the parks to the committee on human services, housing, youth, and elder affairs. That's a long title.
And Kadeem's on that with you.
Yeah.
That's a motion to refer has been made by Councilor Poso, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finances of the mayor, Counselor.
Second.
Kilby, second by Counselor Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Finances adjourned, regular city council meeting will begin in five minutes.
Aye.
Counsel, please come to order, clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yep.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer?
Can we think about Al Lima and everything he did for Fall River?
We can. Will everyone please remain standing for a smoke to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And before I call on the clerk, I just want to acknowledge for the first time here in the council chambers, Lauren Valkart is here, filling in for Colleen. Just want to welcome, everyone remembers Ron Valkart, correct?
Oh, yeah.
She's the daughter of Ron Valkart. I think Carol's, Carol used to be in this chamber as well, right? Just kidding. Carol was the city clerk for many, many years. Lauren's the daughter of Carol and Ron. Councilor, seat six, uh, Councilor, seat five, Councilor Pelletier.
Well, I had the pleasure of working with her today.
Yep.
And she used, dried out a pen on the notes that she had to take today. Very well, she must have four pages of notes, so she's doing a good job. She's a keeper.
She's doing a great job. When I talk to her, she uses invisible ink. So we welcome Lauren.
Welcome.
Madam clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's communication, uh, requesting the confirmation of appointments to the special charter review committee. We have John R. Mitchell, Tracy Almeda, Catherine Nemkovich, Paul Machado Esquire, and Michelle Mimi Larrabee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kilby, second by Counselor Pereira. Roll call.
On confirmation, Councilor Kadeem?
No.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi?
No.
Pelletier?
Uh, no.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Motion carries?
Yes.
Call.
I have the mayor's communication and the financial order that the sum of one million, three-hundred-seventy-thousand dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to the school appropriation from the tax levy FY twenty-three.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Deion, seconded by Counselor Reposo. Do we need a roll call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the mayor's communication and, uh, another financial order that the sum of one-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to law expenses from stabilization fund.
Most to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Counselor Pereira, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is the mayor's communication and an order appropriating two-thousand, two-thousand, excuse me, two-thousand-two-hundred-five dollars as follows, nineteen-hundred-ninety-five dollars for CPA historic resources preservation projects and two-hundred-ten dollars for CPA community housing.
Most to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Pereira, second by Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is the mayor's communication and orders of taking for the MBTA South Coast Rail program off-site traffic mitigation improvements at the intersection of President Ave and North Main Street.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended made by Counselor Kilby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Washington, under motion, Councilor, seat two, Councilor Vice President, Deion.
Um, two weeks, we're going to have an election, November eighth. We don't know how the citizens of this city are going to vote, if it's going to be a yes or if it's going to be a no vote. If it were to be a no vote, this would be a moot point. And I don't know which way it's going to go and I'm not advocating one way or another. It's not my job to influence people, but I think we should be waiting to see how the people vote before we worry about amending or taking any land for the project. I don't think two weeks, um, is going to make a huge difference in terms of getting it done as part of the project. So I don't want to stifle conversation if other people want to speak, but I will be making a motion to table.
Thank you, Councilor, one, Councilor Kadeem?
Could I just, uh, make a motion to waive the rules, just so that the administration come down? Quick question.
Motion has been made by Councilor to waive the rules.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Reposo, I believe seconded first. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has been made. Can we try to keep it brief, please, since we're waiving the rules?
So just in term of the taking, so we, we've already approved the takings, you're looking for an amendment on the taking?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm assuming it's not eminent domain, everybody has agreed to the taking, there are no issues.
That's correct.
So just, I guess for my own identification, if, if the vote fails, um, in two weeks or whatever timeframe it is, are you still moving forward with the potential for traffic improvement down there?
I don't know the answer to that. I know there's been plenty of discussion as to what happens if the vote fails on a number of fronts. Um, I have not been privy to a conversation about what we may or may not do.
Okay, so I guess let me, let me ask the question a different way. So if, regardless if it passes or fails, if there's any type of traffic improvements down there, you would need the taking, so I'm assuming it.
Yes.
Good point.
Okay. That's, that's, that's a first statement.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Senator. Motion has been made and seconded.
There was a motion to table.
There was a second.
I didn't, I said I would be making.
No, no, there was a motion. We, we wouldn't have discussion.
So I will now make the motion to table.
We wouldn't have a discussion unless there was a motion and it was seconded and she's, didn't make the motion to table, there's no discussion, a motion to table.
Oh, I thought she made a motion to table.
No.
I'm making it now.
Motion, table takes precedence, roll call. Under motion, is there a second to the motion to table?
Was there a second, Mr. President?
There's not a second yet. Motion to table, hearing no second does not carry.
It's fine.
There was a motion to adopt and a second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded by Counselor Kilby, seconded, I believe it was Counselor Washington. Under motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat two opposed. Call.
Item number six is the FY twenty-three quarter one budget report.
Motion for the finance.
Motion for the finance.
Second.
Made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Deion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is a communication from the mayor and an order to accept grants in the amount of, the first one, two-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-two dollars. That is the mass E O E E A to purchase a seven-point-ten-acre farmland portion of Adirondack Farm adjacent to the North Watupu Pond. And the second, in the amount of sixty-five-thousand dollars, that's the mass EOPS grant for the FRPD to purchase nine new speed radar signs, thirty bicycle helmets and reflective bands, and to compensate officers to conduct traffic enforcement during the yearly six MRS campaigns.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Washington, seconded by Counselor Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight is the mayor's communication and an order accepting a donation of two paintings for the fall of the public library from artist Sheila Olivera.
Most to accept donation?
Motion to accept the donation is made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby, under motion, Councilor, seat six, Counselor Pereira.
I was at the, um, Heritage State Park when Sheila Olivera presented all of the paintings. They're still hung up there and two of the paintings that will be hung at the library, but it is amazing the work that she's done. So I would request that we also send a letter of thanks, uh, to her.
We can do that, Councilor.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Whereas the South Coast Rail Project has been discussed extensively for over thirty years and whereas this very important project to increase public transportation is finally becoming a reality for the city of Fall River and whereas access to the commuter rail will increase economic growth and stability in the city, now therefore be resolved that the city council supports this worthwhile project and encourages the residents to vote in favor of this city being added to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the resolution, made by Counselor Kilby, you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Washington, under motion, Councilor, seat two, Counselor Deion?
Yeah, um, I can't support this resolution. Um, I don't think this council is in the business of telling people how to vote or trying to sway votes. When you go in a voting booth, it's supposed to be a private matter and I don't think that we have the right to tell people how they should vote. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. This resolution, in my opinion, doesn't tell anyone what to do, it's just a fraction of what this council is wanting to do.
Encourage the residents to vote in favor of this city being added to the MBTA. That's, that statement right there is saying that we want the voters to say yes. So again, it, it has nothing to do with what side I'm on because I have not voiced my opinion to anyone, um, of what side I'm on. It's, I don't think I have the right to try to tell the voters how to vote, whether it be in the affirmative or the negative. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, seat three, Counselor Kilby?
Yes, well, I, usually whoever sponsors a resolution gets the call first, but that's perfectly fine.
I apologize, I apologize, I'm just, I know.
That's fine.
That's my fault.
Um, so, um, I'll brief on it, okay? Uh, this is, we've been talking about quality of life issues a lot tonight. And this is a quality of life issue. This issue has been talked about for over thirty years. Government, Governor Weld, uh, came down and, uh, gave a guarantee that it was going Government Governor Weld uh came down and uh gave a guarantee that it was going to happen in like five to ten years, if everyone recalls. So um there's a large state investment, um waterfront, our culture, um make, as Councilor seat one said, make our city a more inviting place. It's it's just um a no-brainer not to support this, and all due respect to Councilor seat two, I do have a lot of respect for her. And so the only arguments I'm hearing against this resolution is we don't want to urge people how to vote. We have very intelligent voters, okay? And it's our job, we're as elected, to advocate for good things that are going to happen in this community. So I think it's totally proper and fitting uh to support, you know, at least going on record saying this is something that that uh that the city council wants to see happen. You vote how you want to vote. If you don't want, and the two gentlemen spoke in citizen input, I respect their opinions as well, um although I disagree with them. So um I strongly urge us to please vote for this. It'll send a message to our community that uh the nine city councils that they vote for and elect are supporting this worthwhile project, and uh it's long overdue. We really need uh the enhancement of transportation. Transportation has been the key for so many things for thousands of years. I don't want to get too deep in history, but all roads lead to Rome, um Intercontinental Railroad. It it just spirits more positive things in your community, so. I've said enough, um and I'd appreciate it if my colleagues can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. You yield, Councilor?
Yes, I do.
Councilor seat two, Councilor Deion.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. Your opinion, I'm fine with. Uh, you expressing that you think it's a good project, I'm fine with. Um, yes, you are very much entitled to your opinion. My my um objection was encouraging the residents to vote in a specific way. Whether you were encouraging them to vote yes or no, it doesn't matter how you're encouraging the vote. The fact is, you're encouraging them to vote.
Amend it.
So that's my.
Take that language out.
That's my issue.
Take that language out.
Let me just run the amendment.
We're not going to have any discussion going back and forth between colleagues. She has the floor. Do you yield, Councilor?
No, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Washington.
Run the amendment.
I will yield to Councilor in seat six first, and then I'll.
Councilor seat one has a hand.
Oh, go ahead. That's fine. I'll wait.
Do you yield, Councilor?
I yield.
Thank you. Councilor seat one, Councilor Cadeen.
Thank you. I was I was just going to ask my colleague in seat three if he'd be willing to amend it, and I I think the amendment.
That's it.
Um, should read that be resolved that the city council recommends support of this worthwhile project uh for the city being added to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. And the reason, you know, I don't disagree, I think the word vote shouldn't be in there, so if we make a recommendation uh for the support, that's just telling the public that we do that. It's not uncommon, if you go to any other town that has town meetings, typically you'll have a board of selectmen and the finance committee that will give their recommendation on warrant articles that range from a host of of things, um ballot questions, budgets, uh planning changes, things of that nature. So I think the language recommends support. I think that's something is a little bit more palatable.
Is that in the form of a motion, Councilor?
Uh, as as long as.
Yes, I totally agree with it. I actually dictated this um to Colleen um in five, ten minutes, and um if that term is offensive to anybody, doesn't think it's appropriate, maybe not offensive, doesn't think it's appropriate, then of course.
Well, I think the Council is on the right track. So who wants to make the motion? It doesn't.
I'll I'll make the motion that we amend the resolution.
Second.
As states, be resolved that the city council recommends support of this worthwhile project that the city being added to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Senator.
Is that good enough? Do you get that? Okay. Motion had been made and seconded by, motion made by Councilor Cadeen, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Any discussion? Councilor Washington, did you want to speak now or yours?
I just wanted to, am I speaking on the motion, the amended motion?
You can speak on whatever you like.
Okay.
I just I just want to support my colleague in seat three. I think that if if we don't move forward, you move backwards, and I and I support this wholeheartedly. I think this is is a great representation. I support the language change in it. I think that um you're right, transportation is the key for thousands of years, and um moving forward, just think of the jobs this will bring in people in Fall River that have transportation issues, can now take the train to Boston, get better jobs, pay for better apartments, better housing. I mean, I'm just very excited about this. I support it. Thank you for putting it through, and I support the amendment. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor.
Council President, thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion?
No.
Motion to adopt as amended? Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
There.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt as amended. Councilor seat one, is there a second? Second by Councilor seat four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat two opposed. Councilor seat six, Councilor Pereira.
I'd have to throw this out there. I had the opportunity to go with a former mayor and another person. We went up and had lunch with Governor Dukakis, former Governor Dukakis, and when he talked about, Linda, finally Fall River's getting that train. What I don't understand is why isn't a high-speed train? They have high-speed trains all over Europe. Why can't we do high speed? So I had promised him that when the train comes, I will pick him up in Brookline. He wants to be on the inaugural run the first time, so. He's excited about the train. With that, I yield. Just wanted to share it with you.
It's funny you should mention that, but I ran to the former Governor Dukakis about five or six years ago, and he said the same exact thing.
Say.
There's no reason that there can't be high speed if you want it to be. So anyway, they know more than we do. Motion had been made and seconded and has all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, no, seat two opposed. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. We're good. Man, click.
Item number ten is an order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England for six new joint pole locations and two joint pole relocations on Bedford and Seaberry Streets.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Deion, seconded by Council Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is an order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of approximately one hundred twenty-eight feet of underground conduit on Bedford Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Deion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve, our auto body shop license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The Council Reposo, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen, our applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Reposo, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is the um city council's appointments to the special charter review committee.
Motion to adopt.
We have Attorney Rena Brown, Timothy Campos, Daniel Robelot, and Counselor Laura Jean Washington.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kilby. On the motion, Councilor seat five, Councilor Pelletier.
Yeah, how many people on this committee?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine?
Nine. The mayor appoints five, and the council president appoints four.
All right. I should have voted for the other one, but I'm going to support this one. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor seat seven, Council Reposo.
Yeah, the only the only thing that I have an issue with this is that it provides no information of the background of these individuals. Obviously, I know my colleague's sitting next to me, um but very much like the earlier order from the mayor, it gave some additional information about what these individuals, what their knowledge background is. We go back to looking at what my colleague in seat two said two weeks ago. I'm I'm interested in where these people are involved and where they're from, a little more information other than just a list of names. So I, if possible, I would like that before I give a good vote on it.
Danny Robelot.
Well, and and Danny as well, but.
Yeah, I apologize, Councilor. I don't know why I haven't got the information yet, the resumes, but I just had to submit it, and I didn't without the information.
Well, and and very much.
If you want me to provide it for you later, or you wanted to want to vote on it prior to that, it's up to you.
So like I like I said to the mayor a few weeks back, I didn't support the original one before because there was no information. I asked for that information, it was it was given. So would it be possible to get that information before I before I make a vote on this?
Just say what they are. Know who they are.
Well, Attorney Rena Brown is an attorney. I don't know if you know Rena Brown. I don't know.
Point of clarification.
Excuse me?
Point of clarification.
Councilor seat three, Councilor Cadeen.
To my understanding, that the resumes are available in the office, and I, there was an opinion from, maybe, I'm not going to waive the rules right there, but uh the resumes cannot be in the packet for some reason.
Yeah.
Um, was that, that was a recommendation by Ramsey or whatever. So uh the resumes are always available for us.
Correct, correct.
To take a trip here.
And Timothy Campos is on the election, along the election board, and um he's someone that I've known my whole life.
Yeah, and if I may. If I may, I mean, the reality is, is that these choice, these picks were provided by the president, not by by the mayor's office, so that's why I went to the mayor's office and asked for that information, and they don't have it. So that's why I'm I'm requesting through the president.
I'll get them to you, Councilor. If you're not comfortable with the vote prior, you can.
Correct.
Make a motion to hold it off. I don't know if it's urgent that we do it at this beginning of that, but I don't see the urgency. It's up to you.
There's a motion to adopt.
Yep.
Motion to adopt.
Made and there's a second, wasn't there?
There was a second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call, man, click. It wasn't left out deliberately, just so you know, Councilor.
No, I I understand.
And I apologize for that.
It was just, I'm just, again, looking for more information about how, you know, we're looking at this group, and and I I do truly think that this process is important, because again, it's going to lead to that, what happens in the next five years. But again, for my own well-being, I want to know that the people who are assigning to this have the qualifications to do so.
Point well intended, Councilor. Thank you. Man, click, roll call.
On the motion to confirm, Counselor Cadeen?
No.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. And I'll get you that information, Councilor.
Thank you, sir.
If you want to see, I'll be available for you and anyone else that wants to look at their qualifications. Man, click.
We have claims.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Motion for a corporation.
Second.
Motion for a corporation, Councilor, made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Reposo.
Quick question, Mr. President.
On the motion.
Yeah, just just. As I was reading through the claims, one of the ones that caught my eye was the situation where an individual was in a wheelchair and tripped. I just want to make sure that was rectified, that particular issue? If if we could find out through you.
You can call the law department and find out. You're going to, we're going to refer this to corporation counsel.
No, I'm just, can we get an update on making sure that was just handled, taken care of, as far as the particular, um, what seems to be an issue with the tile, missing tile, the floor, the sidewalk, whatever it may be?
Yeah, we can get you an update with that, Councilor.
Thank you. I yield.
Motion for it has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Item sixteen, our minutes of the planning board meeting.
Motion to adopt, approve, planning board.
Motion to adopt, has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Attorney General's response to an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins uh back in April.
Motion accept, place on file.
Place on file.
Motion accept, place on file, made by Councilor Cadeen, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item eighteen is an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the September sixteenth meeting.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for a corporation counsel, made and seconded. Who made the motion? Councilor Deion, and seconded by Councilor Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Councilor seat one, Councilor Cadeen?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, just through you, could, I guess in the future, can we just have any open meeting law complaints just read?
Sure, we can do it.
No, no, just, yeah, we had gotten a, well, I say we, CCONC had gotten a legal opinion saying that before we refer any of the uh open meeting law complaints, that the body has to actually read it, so now we're in the process of actually reading the complaint, so I'm trying to just avoid any potential future open meeting law complaints, so.
Man, click, do you want to do that today, or?
Up to you.
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. The Fall River City Council violated the open meeting law as follows. The city clerk, Allison Bouchard, illegally called the, and posted a special meeting of the Fall River City Council at four oh one PM on September fifteenth to be held at six fifteen, having no lawful authority to do so. Number two, at six fifteen, city clerk Allison Bouchard called the special meeting of the city council to order at six fifteen and conducted the meeting as chair with no lawful authority to do so. Charter of the City of Fall River, section two dash six, only allows for special meetings of the city council to be called by the president or the call of any three or more members. City Code of the City of Fall River, section two dash fifty-five, allows for a special meeting of this council to be called by the mayor or the president of the city council with at twenty-four hours' notice. This is an unlawful ordinance, as it is in conflict with open meeting law, and the city council subcommittee on ordinances should either amend this ordinance to comply with the open meeting law or be prepared to defend this in a civil action to be filed in Superior Court. Section eighteen of the open meeting law defines emergency as a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances depending immediate action, excuse me, demanding immediate action. On September thirteenth, city council president Pamela Libby resigned her position as president of the city council. It is my opinion that Vice President Michelle Deion automatically promotes to the presidency. It is the position of the city of Fall River that this is not accurate. Blacks Law Dictionary defines vice president as one, an officer selected in advance to fill the presidency if the president dies, resigns, is removed from office, or cannot or will not serve. Number two, a corporate officer or mid-level to high rank. Blacks Law Dictionary, abridged ninth edition, twenty-ten. This is an intentional violation of the open meeting law in order to prevent President Deion from becoming president. At the September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the vote was five for Joseph Kamara and four for Michelle Deion, proving that five would do anything legal or not to prevent the legitimate vice president fulfilling, fulfilling the presidency.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to refer?
Motion for, I think we already did it, but we can do it again, just to be on the safe side before we get through it again. Councilor seat one, Councilor Cadeen made a motion to refer to corporation counsel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nineteen, our minutes of the city council public hearing held on October eleventh.
Motion approve.
Motion approved, made by Councilor seat one, seconded by Councilor seats, Councilor seat one, Councilor Cadeen, seconded by Councilor seat eight, Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty, our minutes of the Committee on Finance, held on October eleventh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approve has been made by Councilor seat two, Council Deion, seconded by Councilor seat one, Council Cadeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-two, our minutes of the regular meeting of the city council, held on October eleventh.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Councilor seat one, Council Cadeen, seconded by Councilor seat two, Councilor Deion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, we have the Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on October twenty-fifth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to the Committee on How Human Services, Housing, Youth, and Elder Affairs. This was the resolution to discuss plans to improve city parks and baseball fields.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Reposo, and seconded by Council Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council will take a two-minute recess to get some signatures signed. City council will reconvene. All I need is an entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by Councilor seat one, Council Cadeen, seconded by Councilor seat two, Council Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good night, everybody. Good job.